Councilman Poles. Councilman Fian.
Here.
Councilman Orzachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Here.
Mayor Sherwood.
Pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any public comments on agenda items only? Please approach for podium and state your name. Councilman Fian.
Captain Sinsley, can you come up here? I'd like to, on behalf of the Public Safety Department in the City of Monessin, we'd like to present Captain Daniel Sinsley with a letter of commendation. He reads as follows: City of Monessin, Department of Public Safety, October 18th, 2018. City of Monessin would like to acknowledge Captain Daniel Sinsley of Monessin Volunteer Fire Department, Hose House Number Two, with this letter of commendation. On this date, Captain Sinsley was faced with an adverse predicament. He promptly notified the Monessin Police Department, as well as Director of Public Safety, and the chain of command from within his fire department. Captain Sinsley, your honesty, integrity, and the handling of this matter are earnestly appreciated and acknowledged. Your conduct shows your respect for your position, your department, and the city that you serve. Thank you for your integrity and service. Continued wishes for success. Respectfully, David Fian, Director of Public Safety.
Councilman Fian will be joining the steering committee of the elected officials of the cause. My, Councilman Fian, would you like to elaborate on that just a little bit?
So there was a meeting with the DCD back in October, and it was in conjunction with MBR Consulting to create a council of governments between several municipalities within the area and among planning and coordination and assistance with each other. It also allows the cities to, for example, say you buy salt for your city. Well, if you've got a council of governments ordering salt at a larger scale, everybody saves money. So it is, one, to reduce costs, two, to create and develop a future plan for our communities. And they asked me to be the representative for Monessin on that council.
Sounds good.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And happy birthday.
Thank you.
There will be a treasures report on our next meeting. There'll also be a police report for the month ending for November 2018. I have a motion to approve the contract between the City of Monessin and WEC, Inc., acting as the project engineer on the CDBG fiscal year 2017 roadway rehabilitation project phase one. Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions on the motion?
Councilman Fian.
Aye.
Councilman Orzachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
I have a motion to approve payment of urban design ventures in the amount of $1,500 for basic planning consulting services and technical assistance for the month of October 2018 to be paid out of CDBG funds. Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions on the motion?
Councilman Fian.
Aye.
Councilman Orzachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
I have a motion to approve payment for Ford Business Machines in the amount of $75 for lease of car here for the month of November to be paid out of CDBG funds. Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions on the motion?
Councilman Fian.
Aye.
Councilman Orzachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
I have a motion to approve the consultation agreement between the City of Monessin and Bill Gammel, Police Fire Testing Personnel Management Consultant, to approve technical assistance to develop, update police civil service hiring and promotional rules and regulations in the amount of $1,100. Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions on the motion?
Councilman Fian.
Aye.
Councilman Orzachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
I have a motion to approve the City of Monessin jointer evidencing, the consent and acknowledgement of the Second Amendment to the loan agreement by the, between the Department of Economic Development and Alimisource. Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions on the motion?
Councilman Fian.
Aye.
Councilman Orzachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
I have a motion to award the bid for the 279 Schoonamaker Avenue demolition and site clearance project to Stash Trucking as the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of $147,000 to be paid out of the Economic Development and Community Development Initiative Program grant as recommended by WEC, Inc. Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions on the motion? I would like to mention that that is the grant, the money, I'm sorry, the money we got from Senator Stefano, that he came through, so thank you, Senator, for your hard work. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Councilman Fian.
Aye.
Councilman Orzachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
I have a motion to rescind Resolution 3-2018 authorizing the submittal of an early intervention program grant requested to DCED in the amount of $146,700 and the committed local cash match of $16,300 due to the change in scope of services. Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions on the motion?
Councilman Fian.
Aye.
Councilman Orzachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Motion to authorize the city administrator to send a letter to Michael Foreman, local government policy specialist withdrawing the DCED early intervention program grant request of $146,700. Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions on the motion?
Councilman Fian.
Aye.
Councilman Orzachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Motion to waive on-street parking meter fees for the period beginning December 15th, 2018, through January 3rd, 2019.
Second.
Second? Questions on the motion?
Councilman Fian.
Aye.
Councilman Orzachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Our first reading of Proposed Ordinance Number 8-2018, an ordinance of the City of Monessin, County of Westmoreland, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, appropriating specific sums estimated to be required for the specific purpose of the municipal government hereinafter set forth during the year 2019.
Second.
Do I have a second? Questions on the motion?
Councilman Fian.
Aye.
Councilman Orzachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
First reading of the Proposed Ordinance Number 9-2018, an ordinance of the City of Monessin, County of Westmoreland, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, fixing the tax rate for the year 2019. Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions on the motion?
Councilman Fian.
Aye.
Councilman Orzachowski.
Aye.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
There'll be a library report for the month of November 2018, if anybody wants to see it. There's also the financial report for November 2018. A motion to approve transfer of real estate tax funds collected from November 1st through November 31st, 2018, to the following funds. General debt, $8,585.64. Debt service fund, $3,207.90. Parks and Recreation Fund, $1,259.05. And the Library Fund, $334.85. Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions on the motion?
Councilman Fian.
Aye.
Councilman Orzachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Motion to approve transfer of delinquent real estate tax funds collected from November 1st through November 31st, 2018, to the following funds, to the following funds, excuse me. General Fund is $141.52. Debt Service Fund is $52.88. Parks and Recreation Fund, $20.75. The Library Fund, $5.52. Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions on the motion?
Councilman Fian.
Aye.
Councilman Orzachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Motion to approve payment to Ritten Iron Sons Construction Company, Inc., in the amount of $30,000 for invoice number MON-004 for the 2018 Downtown Monessin Demolition and Site Clearance Project as recommended by WEC, Inc., to be paid out of the bond refinancing funds. Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions on the motion?
Councilman Fian.
Aye.
Councilman Orzachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
A motion to approve payment to WEC, Inc., for professional services for bid review for the 2018 Monessin Downtown Demolition and Site Clearance Project in the amount of $865 to be paid out of the capital improvement funds obtained through refinancing of the city's bonds.
Second.
Do I have a second? Questions on the motion?
Councilman Fian.
Aye.
Councilman Orzachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
A motion to approve payment to WEC, Inc., for professional services for construction management for the 2018 Monessin Downtown Demolition and Site Clearance Project in the amount of $4,813.60 to be paid out of the capital improvement funds obtained through refinancing of the city's bond.
Second.
Do I have a second? Questions on the motion?
Councilman Fian.
Aye.
Councilman Orzachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Motion to approve payment to WEC, Inc., for professional services for preparation of specifications, HOP coordination and project management for the 279 Schoonamaker Avenue Emergency Demolition and Site Clearance Project in the amount of $4,638.60 to be paid out of the capital improvement funds obtained through refinancing of the city's bonds. Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions on the motion?
Councilman Fian.
Aye.
Councilman Orzachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Motion to approve reimbursement for the General Fund for Payroll Expenditures for the month of October and November 2018 from the Parks Fund in the amount of $26,036.18.
Second.
Do I have a second? Questions on the motion?
Councilman Fian.
Aye.
Councilman Orzachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Motion to approve reimbursement for the General Fund for Payroll Expenditures for the months of May through October 2018 from the Line Usage Funds in the amount of $7,430.48. Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions on the motion?
Councilman Fian.
Aye.
Councilman Orzachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
And a motion to transfer all the funds in the amount of $5,937.76 in the Doorman Community Bank account previously associated with the old City Hall building at Wendell Ringway into the Community Bank General Fund account and close the unused bank account.
Second.
Second? Questions on the motion?
Councilman Fian.
Aye.
Councilman Orzachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
And I pass this to Councilwoman Thomas.
Good evening, everyone. There will be a Street and Parks Department report for November 2018 at the next meeting. We have a motion to approve repair of the traffic signal at the intersection of SR 0906 Schoonamaker Avenue and Riverview Road to operate in accordance with the existing traffic signal permit as determined by the traffic study performed by Pendon and as according to availability of funds.
Second. Do I have a second? Questions on the motion?
Councilman Fian.
Aye.
Councilman Orzachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes. We also have a motion to send a letter of appreciation and thanks for the monetary donations received from the following individuals and businesses toward the cost of electricity for the city's Christmas lights. Rose Marion Betza and Robert Betza. Gary W. Boeben, Financial Planning. Joseph Del Farnson. Mark M. Dues and Madeline D. Dues. David Fian, Frank Service Garage Incorporated. Robert J. Kopka, CPA DC. Matthew Loftus and Parnell Enterprises, Inc. and Valley First Community, FCU.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions on the motion?
Councilman Fian.
Aye.
Councilman Orzachowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Thomas. Councilman Fian.
Hi, everybody. Hub code office, financials, and a report for the month of November. Also, the fire report, Mon Valley EMS, and the Civic Center Red Board Report for November, the next meeting. Thank you.
Solicitor?
No reports yet.
Thank you.
And the controller's not here. Before we get to public comments, a couple things we'd like to inform all of you on. First of all, before I get to something else, the finances for the state and the city. We are right now $150,043.06 in the red. We have a balance of $64,563 in the general fund. And we've been keeping a tally because of people, some people have been asking, a lot of people have been asking, why are we in debt? Why don't we have the money? Couple things. Healthcare in this city is killing the city. It's just killing the city. Some of the budgets need to be trimmed. You know, we don't have a magic wand. We keep going more and more into debt. We can't afford it. I've said this time and time and time again. You know, this six mil tax increase wasn't pretty. Nobody wanted it. But the facts and figures don't lie. Healthcare is going to cost this city $1.3 million in 2019. Now just wrap your head around that, a budget of 4.3 million. It's huge. And it's just huge, and it's out of sight. And I'm not sure, we've talked about many ways to try to cut it down, to wrangle it, and it's difficult. It's something that should have been done years ago, in small increments. And now it's come to roost. Whether anybody in this room doesn't like to hear it or not, it's come to roost. It's going to choke this city dead. 1.3 million. And I know I'm going to get a lot of pushback on this one, but I'm just giving you numbers. I'm not justifying or condemning, I'm just giving you hard numbers. Next year, for police, it's $933,000. Add them up, that's almost half of the whole budget for the whole city. That's assuming every one of you hard-earned taxpayers pay your taxes. If some people say, "I've had enough," and choose not to do it, or real estate goes down, or someone doesn't appeal, or something else happens, those are unexpected things that we have learned, that we can't control, that'll put this city that much far into debt. And one of the things I want to express to everybody is, this six mil tax increase will not give any of us one more penny of service. I'm not saying the service we don't get isn't extraordinary. It is. If it is to maintain and balance the budget for 2019, we will be back in the same situation we are come August, September. And we can't raise taxes anymore, nor would we want to. I'm glad to see there's a lot of people here tonight, because I've said it before, this council doesn't have a magic wand. Okay? This has been coming for a long time. We got stuck with it. Okay? You can get mad at us, or mad at me, or mad at anybody, but the figures are there. And we have struggled to make sure nobody's gotten laid off. Nobody hasn't lost a paycheck. But it hurts, because we have, it's going to probably be at least over $200,000 easy, if not a quarter of a million, that we're going to have unpaid debt. Creditors, we owe, the first of the year. So. I just want to let the people know where we sit. That way, you can hear it here first, instead of the rumors that are going to fly out of this place after this is over for some reason. That's the way it is. There's one other thing that came up today, and it came up later. And it's still a little bit disturbing. At the end of the year, there are appointments that council makes for boards or authorities that are coming due. We've all been there, most of us have been there, some of them served on, some of them are out there right now. Okay? Usually those appointments come at the very end of the year, being you try to make them as the last meeting as you possibly can so not to get anybody upset, that you put a favorite in there ahead of time, or things like that. There's been a long debate, and there's a lot of people in this room that could say they know that debate, they've heard that debate, they've been part of that debate. Okay? But this council chose not to do that. And we're going to wait till the last second to make an appointment. And we've advertised, am I correct? We have advertised, and advertised, and asked for people, and get recommendations. And anybody who wants to put their name in, they can, for all the boards and authorities that are coming up. We've done everything and tried to do everything above board. Okay? Meaning that if there's any business being done, it's being done here, now, at a work session or a meeting, and it's being done in front of you, the taxpayers in the public. I believe that's what's required by the sunshine law. Okay? That it has to be that way. Okay? Well, there is an appointment coming up on the redevelopment authority at the end of the year, the 31st. Okay? Council was not going to make that appointment or do anything until after around the 27th. It is the mayor's appointment, so we would expect to wait to hear if people were interested. They might put their name in, it is the mayor's perspective. Well, we got an email today from the office of the mayor that he already appointed somebody and sworn them in and had them officially put in. Okay? We don't know anything about this, but it just popped up today. All right? Now, a couple things. One, you can say what you want, again, everybody's entitled to their opinions, and I appreciate it, and sometimes you may think I don't respect them, I do. But this council has done everything openly, clearly. We haven't hidden anything, never, from day one. Even when Councilman Sherwood Valley, rest his soul, was on this council. Everything was open. Okay? All total transparency. I remember those words from somebody that ran for mayor and won, that there was open and transparency. And there weren't going to be things that happened behind the scenes, because if they happened, he was going to let all of you people know, and he was going to go to state officials and say, "Dammit, that council's doing things it shouldn't be doing."
Right.
Am I lying?
No, I heard you.
He's stated that many times, publicly or whatever. Well, he just did something behind your back. Okay, for one. Two, and we plan on looking into this legally, is that this appointment, which he's already had notarized and officially done, was not done in front of a public meeting, which violates, which could violate the sunshine law. This is your mayor.
Who did he appoint?
Yeah, that's a good question.
Well, I'll leave that off for right now. Tell her? Sure, okay. And I don't know the individual, so if that individual happens to be here, you don't have to raise your hand, because I really don't know who you are. I'd like to meet you sometime, but, Sharon LuGud? I don't have a clue.
That's last week's.
So. So, he did this the 12th, he sent it to us today, this afternoon.
Around 2:00 p.m., I think we got it.
Yeah, around 2:00 something. And I told Judy, "This is done, I've already made the appointment." And yes, it is his appointment, but that appointment must be made in front of all of you in public at a council meeting. Okay? But he wants to choose to do it by what, Facebook or anything else, the way he thinks he's running the city? So, I want bringing you out again, this is your mayor.
Why doesn't he ever show up at meetings?
You might want to ask him that question, ma'am. I quit speaking for him, because when I do, I can get in trouble, and he doesn't like what I say. So I've chosen not to say that anymore. But we're here to be open, I will, a second, but thank you. We're here to be open and transparent, and I think some of you who I've had some very vigorous conversations with at least respect that we are open and transparent, and we will listen to even publicly anything. Okay? But this has got to stop, because I'm telling you what, people, he's going to continue to do this behind everybody's back and cause problems.
How do we stop it?
I'll ask our solicitor if he wants to comment.
Call the governor's office, call your senator's office, call your state rep's office, because from our perspective, there's nothing council can do.
Really?
Legally.
It's in the Constitution of Pennsylvania, and the third-class city code. It has to come from the governor and the senate.
And he's allowed, an absentee mayor is permitted to do this?
As ridiculous as it seems and is, he's continued to do this for the remainder of his term.
Legally?
Yeah.
I don't think they ever wrote anything in the Constitution.
Well, they're working on, they're working on changing it.
Tony, for a point of interest, the redevelopment authority had a meeting, and there was a motion passed. The redevelopment authority does not notice Matt Schorall as the mayor of Monessin. They notice you as the mayor of Monessin. So, anyone that's appointed by Matt Schorall will not be accepted in the redevelopment authority, or they will not, this will recognize him.
I think, like I've said to a lot of people, I did not run for the job. It is not my job. If I'm responsible as deputy mayor to carry out actions there, I will do that. But I don't want the job. If I wanted, I'd have ran. I ran for council, that's what I ran for.
Could I ask the question, and this is referenced with Councilman Fian just said. What would happen, and I'm not trying to be facetious about this. What would happen if you guys quit coming?
We would lose a quorum right now, and we wouldn't be able to...
I mean, who would replace you?
We can't go on vacation, we can't get sick.
Through the summer? That's essentially what would happen again.
Okay.
Same thing would happen if shut down.
That's right, because you, we don't have the other ones, you have to have a quorum.
Who would replace the members then?
I believe it would go to the courts.
The court would have to make the appointment.
Yeah.
Again, and not being here, like, that doesn't make sense to me.
You can't, that's, you know, these appointments to the boards happen in open and advertised, the meetings, you know, it's not a council decision, but it's a decision from the City of Monessin. It's got to be in an open meeting, or it violates the sunshine act. It's not hard.
And we do want you to know that it's budget time, and you all know that. There are negotiations going on, some of our great employees. He's not part of any of them.
Oh, my.
He's never taken 10 seconds of his time to be involved in it. So I just want you to be aware of this, because I'm sure something's going to fire up on Facebook, and everybody's going to start, someone's going to say this, and he's going to say, "We're doing this thing illegally."
Guaranteed.
Well, next time he says to any of you, "Council's doing things illegally," you might want to throw this up in his face, because we certainly are. Thank you.
Did the council make a motion, like, to redevelopment authority, that you don't recognize Matt Schorall as the mayor?
It would have no effect.
At least you'd have it on the record that that's...
They took care of that, I agree.
Yeah.
I'm going to ask now, if anybody like their public comments and non-agenda items, please come up, sign your name, and speak.
I am the 26th Pennsylvania Board. I'm here tonight as the manager of Mon Valley Records Disposal Authority. For those of you who don't know who we are, we're a board that was created by the City of Monessin and the borough of North Belburne to be the liaison between the two municipalities and their residents and the award disposal company. Since the authority was started, meetings are held monthly. One month it's here in Monessin, and the other month it's in North Belburne. The reason we do this is for the residents, you're from Monessin, you can come to a Monessin meeting, you're from North Belburne, you can come to the North Belburne meeting. When leaving our meeting that was here in October, it was brought to our attention that the authority might have to find another meeting place instead of meeting here in Monessin. It was told to us that it was too late, our meeting's at 7:00, it was too late for a representative from Monessin to allow us to have access to the building. I contacted the city of Monessin in November to inform them that the December meeting was scheduled in Monessin, and I received an email from Councilman Orchowski telling me that, wait, let me find it here. Due to unforeseen circumstances, he informed me that we are not able to accommodate, the city is not able to accommodate our request, and suggests that we, the authority, look elsewhere to hold our meetings, starting in December. We would just like to know what the unforeseen circumstances are. Did the board know that he was doing this? I understand that other places are meeting here after working hours, so why is this only affecting us?
Well, your one day that was a request, that we're having a meeting, there was nobody to let you in or let you out. I wasn't available, Judy had to leave, and there was nobody else. I mean, there really was nobody else, nobody else can get in. I mean, I hate to say this, the mayor used to have a key and be able to have a combination, but he doesn't have that anymore, so we just lost a person. We couldn't, I mean, if you can't do it, oh, I'm sorry, I couldn't be here. There was no way.
So we are welcome back in two thousand nineteen?
Nobody said you weren't. What my recommendation was, if this is gonna be a scheduling conflict, that we're having a problem, and I can't ask her to keep, to stay seven o'clock at night when that happens.
Why, I also told you we moved it to six.
Okay, if you did move it to six, okay. If she's not here or can't stay, which I can't expect her to, and say I'm not around or I'm working, I don't have to do for you. And I don't wanna do that to you when you wanna have a meeting, okay? You wanna have, maybe people wanna come. I don't wanna promise you something I can't promise you, because it's off hours. Is there a solution? Please add, please tell me, and I'll be happy to say, if we can work something out, I don't have a problem with it.
I have a key in North Belburne, they trust me out there.
That's never been brought to us to ask a question. Maybe that is a fine problem.
I believe someone asked you in October, could you give me a key, and you said, "No way."
Well, no, we weren't gonna give keys out, because at that time, we were having an issue. And we were making sure that wasn't happening. But I'm sure council can talk about it, and see what we can come up with.
Well, I need to know, I'm advertising by the end of the month.
How about if we let you know tomorrow? We have an executive session tonight, so how about if we let you know by tomorrow?
I mean, the whole board is here.
Who else meets here, Mr. Orchowski?
The only other people that I know that would meet here would be the redevelopment authorities they meet.
And the zoning board met here the other night.
Well, we have a meeting here.
We still have the zoning board, yeah.
They, I don't, I can't remember the last time they met, but that could be years.
Right.
We don't have a meeting, the person that's gonna open and lock the door. Well, then I think you should accommodate them, 'cause that's part of Monessin, and I think that they have a right to meet here, it's a public building.
We can do the best we can.
We pay the taxes on this building, so they should be able to use it.
But I'll tell you something, if something comes up and nobody's here to let them in.
Give her a key!
We're not giving keys out, let's be quite frank with that. We will work some accommodations out, but we're not giving keys out to the, to the, to the city building.
She's the refu, the authority.
I'm Chair Marina, so I'm on the refu system already. We provide our schedule to both North Belburne and Monessin. The year before, we always meet the first Thursday of every month. And listen, in twenty-five years we've been together, we would never have this issue, and.
I can appreciate that, but then in twenty-five years, you've probably never had a council that hasn't met four and a half, five months, and has got jammed up like hell, what we've had to do lately. So I'm not making excuses, we'll try to work and accommodate it, but that night, it just couldn't happen.
But the thing is, though, every time we have our meetings advertised for the year, every time we have to change it, because you can't accommodate us, it ends up costing the board money, because we have to run another ad and stuff. And that's, that's, again, it's taxpayers' money that's being wasted.
We will try to accommodate you, we'll come up with something. I'm sure we can come up with something.
You mean once a month?
Wait, yes, once a month, the first Thursday of the month. And we've moved our meetings to six o'clock.
We'll work it out.
Every other month, it's one a month.
Every other month in Monessin, but we meet every month.
Every other month, we'll work it out.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure, I mean, I really don't even know when you meet, to be honest with you, so.
What is it, the first?
It's supposed to be the first Thursday of June. First Thursday of June.
That's North Belburne.
That's North Belburne.
So we'll be here.
Let me ask you a question, so we have some reference, and I'm serious, I don't know any of this. How long are your meetings over?
An hour, maybe. Not quite an hour.
We'll make some type of arrangement where you go.
Loz, we got, we got.
Who is our liaison? We haven't seen a council member in our meeting since Pat Orchowski was the last one that was there. And we don't even know who our person is.
I don't think we've ever, we've never sat one and never discussed.
'Cause every board's supposed to have a council.
We're all filling, we're all filling so many different buildings right now.
I understand that, I was just wondering. Because whoever is that, who we should be addressing.
I'll be honest with you, the same thing, like, I would say to the redevelopment authority, the liaison is supposed to be the mayor.
Well, he came once.
I invited him, and he said he would come, and he never, never came to me.
When the redevelopment authority needs.
I think they advertise, I think they advertise also, then maybe we need to, maybe we need to have a better means of communication.
The third Tuesday of every month.
Third Tuesday.
Here at City Hall.
So, yes, we will try to find some way to accommodate.
Okay, so, so we get this straight. Your next meeting, you're supposed to meet here, it's February the first, Thursday, February.
We'll make sure it's taken care of, one way or another.
When I advertise, I will.
You said in six?
Six or four.
Six o'clock. Six o'clock.
When I advertise, I'll send a copy down.
And it could be that it's not, since it's not monthly, you forget about it, not making that as an excuse, but I might include it. We'll make it, we'll make it happen, we'll make it happen, somewhere or another.
My name is Antonette, and I'm a new transplant into Monessin. And this is my concern. My concern is the funding for the Monessin Police Department and the volunteer firefighter, firefighters department. And I wanna know, what's the issue with the funding? What's up with the funding, and will it be available in two thousand nineteen?
The budget's already set at nine hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, so I'm not quite sure I'm understanding the question. It's already budgeted that much.
But if it's budgeted, is it, is it gonna be available? 'Cause we have volunteers, they're volunteers.
For?
For the firefighter department.
I'll let Councilman Finn touch that one.
So, the budget may be there, but when is it, is it gonna be available in two thousand nineteen? And with the police department, because to my knowledge, the state police have had to come in due to, I, I don't understand the technicalities with Monessin Police Department.
No, the state police were in town doing training with Monessin Police Department. They're not here to, it's their full-time job.
So, Monessin Police Department is in full force, that's what you're telling me?
At the moment, it has?
Seven.
Seven in full time?
Seven full time, five part-time.
Yeah, five part-time.
And then, I mean, I don't understa, is that enough? Is that enough, considering the situation that's going to pass on down in Monessin right now?
That's what we can afford.
I, I mean, they're paying more.
I mean, there's only so much tax dollars to go around, and we still have to run the rest of the city. So that's what's budgeted, actually, it's nine hundred and thirty-three thousand for two thousand nineteen. Two thousand eighteen, it was eight sixty-six? Close to that? Yeah, I have it right here.
And that was the other thing.
It was eighty-eight.
And my concern is, as a new transplant, as a resident of Monessin, what can I do to put more power into the Monessin Police Department and the volunteer firefighters? Because those are people that I really respect, and I believe they deserve more. So what can I do as a resident of Monessin to give them more power?
What do you mean by power?
I would say visit with the chief of the departments, and see if they need any assistance in volunteer work or anything like that.
Pay your taxes, I guess.
Chief Jerry Smith is police, Joey Altmar is captain, or chief downtown, and Delmar Hepple, he was here earlier, was the chief of Hilltop.
So can you reiterate that to me one more time, just in case I missed it?
Yeah, I would go to the individual.
The funding, but the funding for two thousand nineteen? Because I was told that there was a bunch of, that, that Monessin Police Department was in a possibility of being shut down, 'cause they needed more, it wasn't enough, that's why the state police was coming through. So as a rumor.
Oh, yeah, Facebook rumor.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, we addressed that a couple weeks ago.
So our police department is fine?
Yeah.
And our volunteer fire department is fine?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Welcome. Welcome to Monessin.
Thank you.
Anthony Potassia, over at Hilltop House. And I probably shouldn't say anything, and I've been beating a dead horse, meeting after meeting, but you know the big areas you have to go after, okay? Delinquent taxpayers, you gotta get a system to bring them, to make them pay. And I know everyone's, oh, you know, I don't wanna, I mean, there's hardships, and we understand that, okay? There's payment plans, there's ways to do it. The county's not gonna support you on it, but you have to do it, okay? Contract, contract negotiations, that one point three million dollar number, Tony, the way I'm looking at this budget, that's health insurance and pension lumped together. Now, when I left, the line item for health insurance was four hundred and eighty thousand. It's still four hundred and eighty thousand, 'cause you're down employees, okay? Now, I know when I put in a contract when I left, it was set up, like the state had their contract, because I'm a state employee. We had that set up to not pay the supplements for the retirees, just their supplement, but not lives, okay? There were certain stipulations in that contract that would've saved a lot of money. You know, longevity came out, and, you know, Delmar's area, we fought. I mean, we went round and round about going down to one fire department, okay? Do we need two? Rosalie did an analysis, seventy-five thousand dollars could be saved if you went down to one. Now, we're not saying eliminate Hilltop building, but what we're saying is we have a lot of equipment, we're paying for diesel fuel, there's ways to do this. You know, three invoices, look at all your insurances, okay? Go back, you gotta put every insurance out for bid, and they're gonna get mad, because the same people had the insurance for twenty years, okay? But guess what? We're going down, so put it all out for bid. I did it, I caught criticism, okay? You know, contracts, insurances, three bids on everything, all right? We talked about delinquent taxpayers, you know? There, there's other ways to do this. Now, I look in the budget, and I see, there's a code enforcement officer, and I like Marvin. Marvin's a friend of mine, he was a friend of my dad's. But, we're gonna need to get somebody in here that has all thirteen licenses, okay? That can generate revenue for the city. Because you see what's happening? Under your line item, you don't put any revenue down. There's nothing under building permits, or, I looked at this a couple weeks ago, I think it was building permits. So you have nothing there, you have nothing coming in. No one can do these inspections, and if somebody does them, the state does them, and they keep the money, okay? Marvin can stay, but if you advertise for somebody who has all these licenses, they can go out and do these construction, you know, permits and everything else, and do them the right way, and generate revenue, okay? The other issue is, you look at the garbage contract, you're not covering your garbage fees, okay? What you're bringing in doesn't even cover the contract. There's your two hundred thousand dollars right there that you're short.
Well, I mentioned that last, last meeting, and for the last three years, the residents of Monessin have felt to pay about two hundred thousand dollars each year.
Right, but if you look at the contract.
We still have to pay, they're bored, so it's, we eat the money that's missing.
Okay, so let's look at the.
The penny that.
You don't pay us, we can't pay them.
Right, but you're two hundred thousand short roughly in what the contract costs to provide for the citizens.
Yeah, every year.
Okay, and what you're collecting.
Correct.
Now, you gotta go after the delinquents, but then what you have to do, in my estimation, instead of going six mils this year, did you ever think about saying, "Look, how many garbage accounts do you have?" I, I know what it was when I was here, I don't know what it is now. Figure out your garbage accounts. I'd rather raise the garbage ten, fifteen, twenty dollars.
Garbage is going up next month, next year.
Well, wait a minute. So, I know Linda's saying, "No," but would you rather have a hundred dollar tax increase? Or a twenty dollar garbage increase?
Our, do you know how our trash is set up? It's set up, not individually, it's set up on the amenities, houses. So we're paying for trash where there's nobody even living in the house.
The point I'm making is, if somebody told you, "Linda, give me a hundred."
You just tried to take us to the bank, how much mortgage money do you think you're gonna get out of the citizen?
Linda, then I'll listen to what I'm saying. Would you rather pay a hundred dollars or twenty dollars? I'm saying, don't raise the taxes six mils, raise the garbage, you'll pay less, okay? But pay your taxes, okay? Everyone has to pay their taxes.
It's not gonna work.
So you were one that, that I thought was on the list that didn't pay the taxes.
No, I paid my taxes.
Okay, so are they, are they current? Are they current?
Uh, guys.
What's my taxes got to do with the trash bill?
Nothing, absolutely, thank you.
So, I did not, I wanted to bring it up.
And don't bring it up again, because now you're attacking me personally, and I don't like it.
All right, look, Anthony, for a second. But it's okay, that's okay, she, she come out to me.
You came after me.
But anyways.
Listen.
All right, look, so.
I'm, I could appreciate it, you being an ex-mayor, and you looking at this, that's why we let everybody see this. And it's open for anybody, anytime, all right? But there's that old, there's that old attitude, yeah.
Yeah, you have to look at your dealings. That was not necessary.
You can do anything, you can do numbers, and trust me, this lady has gone crazy trying to work numbers, and which way or not, anything. We don't have a pot to piss in right now.
I understand.
Okay, your two hundred thousand just doesn't mystically go poof and show up, because everybody comes trotting in here and says, "Oh, I haven't paid my taxes in three or four, my garbage, three or four years." I guarantee you, unfortunately, probably what'll happen this, by two thousand nineteen is.
You're gonna raise your garbage, too.
Well, it is going up already, it's gonna go up because of the year of the contract. But the point is, people that could barely make it right now, and I said this last meeting, are gonna look at this six mil increase and go, "I don't think so, I can't make it now, I'm not gonna come up with something more." You have to solve the problem, and that is what's in this budget.
My only problem, my only point was, maybe instead of, if the average tax increase is a hundred dollars, all I was trying to say, if the average tax increase is a hundred dollars, maybe it may be better or more beneficial to raise garbage fees this year, and not hit them with the big tax increase, and save that for the cushion next year.
We could balance, and we could not balance a budget.
That was my only point.
We could not balance a budget by doing what we didn't do.
Okay, I'm just, I, I brought that up as a point, that's all. It's just something to see.
Before anybody else starts, hey, guys. Here comes the governor. No, no personal texts, all right? Linda, I apologize for that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I thought she deserves an apology. We might not agree with one another, but we should not attack, we don't have a big situation either.
Linda, I, I apologize.
No, not from us, no, not from us, I said, I feel you, yeah, I said, I feel you deserve one.
Linda, I apologize, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said anything, okay? I was wrong, but I was talking, and you interfered with what I was saying, and I was trying to make a difference.
Before, before you know it.
Oh, you made a point by bringing up my taxes.
Is garbage, is it made public somewhere?
Yes.
Is it?
You can look at the contract anytime.
No, 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 I mean the people that are.
No, I can make it available.
Can we shame them into paying?
I'll put it on the website.
I mean, I've seen some of the names on the list. Well, we, Delmar, actually, what we wanna do in two thousand nineteen is publish it in the paper.
I'm gonna put it on the website.
And even taxes.
It was on the website already.
You know, the school used to do that all the time, I don't think they'll do.
My only point is, is I, I've seen some of the names on the list, and I know they can afford it, why are they not paying?
No, I agree.
Because they don't get money.
If you shame them into paying, they'll pay.
They're gonna be starting getting letters, too, saying, you know, pay, or you're gonna assess fees and go to the magistrate.
Some of them are like seven hundred and forty bucks, that's like, what, three or four years ago?
Yeah.
Yeah, change it anyway, taking the magistrate.
Although, some of them got the money, you're gonna get, you shame them, they're gonna.
Take the magistrate, where you gonna get? A hundred dollars a month, right?
All right.
Can't force them into paying.
I guess so.
Okay.
All right, um.
Okay, Governor.
It seems like nobody is really attacking the city's budget problems realistically. There are three ways to make money. One is, we have five business entities in this town that's not paying their fair share of property and school tax. Nobody's touching that. It looks like it gets passed down from one administration to the other one, okay? Nobody's touching that. If you collect their fair share, let me speak. If you collect your fair share, you're looking at three hundred thousand a year, okay? Instead of raising six mils on the backs of the little people, like Anthony keeps talking about the liquid, I'm talking about freeloaders, okay? Nobody's looking at the freeloaders, because they got big names, they got a big business. They're millionaire companies, okay? And they're paying only ninety-four hundred dollars in property school, or ten thousand for the coke plant. There's five businesses here. If, if we put them up where they're supposed to, they're looking at three hundred to three hundred fifty thousand a year. That's one.
All right, let me just touch on one, actually, we authorized him at the last meeting, the one you relate to, to, to investigate that, so. to, to investigate that, so.
Now, we'll cover it.
All right, can I, what are your list of five?
Do you want to talk to me? We'll do it later. Right now, I want to go through my...
Yeah, go, go, I just want to let you know that.
You gotta keep interrupting me all the time.
Oh, we don't want to know who Delmar.
I'm just going to one by one.
Number two, you guys are not getting good bids. When I was looking for a contractor, I called 11 contractors. I didn't say three bids, and I got to pick one out of three. I keep calling and I found one contractor that was 50% less than the rest of them. Okay?
Are you talking about the demolition?
I'm talking about all this stuff. About the garbage fees. Why do we have to stay with the same contractors since the dawn of Manessa?
Okay, first off, stop.
Yeah, get back to the mic.
Okay. I think it's kind of unique for having individual contractors, isn't somebody that's going to have a hammer and a truck that's not going to tear down a building over there, they've got to have a big excavator, and it's finished. And it's not just a small excavator, it's got to hit two and a half, three stories, okay? Safely. One, not a lot of contractors want to have dilly-dally around all the permits from DEB, everything else that they have to jump through to make sure everybody is safe as they should be doing by state regulations. Okay? That's two. Three, we advertise. Nobody wants it.
Who do you advertise it? One local paper? That doesn't even reach 50% of the public? What are you talking about?
We advertise more than one paper, that's enough.
Okay. That's it, dude, that's right.
Not a big project.
Well, a big project, but I'm talking about all these other things. You guys got multiple contracts, and we're only just going to the same well, expecting we're going to get something different. I don't understand that. Then why do you tie down to the same contractors for garbage?
That's controlled by the renovation authority contract.
Can you, can you guys answer that?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
You ever come to a meeting?
What we do is, we, we put a bid out and we, we accept bids for a six-year contract. We did have multiple bidders on the job. And what, part of our stipulation, when that, we try to get a six-year contract because we get the best, the best deal by going with six years.
Right.
And there's a lot of things involved in that contract. There's a lot of things they have to address with that one-on-one with the recycling and everything. They have to have enough equipment to be able to handle the contract. It's not just a dollar thing, it's, you have to be able to...
The company you work now, was that the lowest bid?
Yes, it was.
Okay, and what was the next lowest bid?
I don't have that information. Linda, I'd love to prepare to discuss all that.
But you're welcome.
It was three years ago.
You come to the refuge authority meeting first Thursday of whatever.
First Thursday of every month.
First Thursday, and we have all the...
It's bad enough I get dumped here, I don't want to get dumped.
Oh, come on. I just want to share it with everybody else, buddy.
Closer.
All right, he's got one more.
One more, one too bad.
One more, you kind of shop around for another insurance company. We guys are paying too much.
For what?
For me, the, the, what's the first deductible for the city?
Wait, what, are we talking insurance for the overall buildings, all this, are we talking...
Everything, the police and everything.
No, wait a minute, are you talking healthcare for everybody?
Yeah, everything, everything.
Are you talking building insurance, equipment insurance?
Everything. How come you people don't get the best insurance rate? You keep going to the same outlets. You're going to shop around. A penny, a penny saved is a penny earned. And you guys even milking that.
Ernie.
He's turning red.
Ernie. All right, I'm going to say something, I'm going to say, I'm going to say. We need every penny we could get. You agree? From everybody. Do you agree with that?
Just thinking.
Careful what you say.
Oh, no, Tony, don't go there.
You're lucky my wife said that. Nope. You're lucky my wife said no, and I'm not going to do it.
You're supposed to get the best deal, not trying to get every penny from everybody. That's a different ballgame.
We are...
You know it.
I got it.
Okay, how many hours do you spend a week in your positions at the office trying to get these...
Oh, that's it.
Trying to get these out of the thing?
Ernie, sit down.
Go call Matt, ask him to help you out. Ask Matt to help us.
Matt's not my friend.
I ain't say that. He's like, he's our mayor, he's going in charge.
Ernie. Seriously.
Sit down, wait and see, Barry.
Ask my wife how many phone calls I get a day at night, constantly with everybody.
On the weekends.
Problems, okay? During work, phone calls, okay? And again.
Don't you believe me?
Well, I, I got you one better. Yesterday was my daughter's seventh birthday, and I spent two hours during that free time. When I got home from work, my nine-to-five job, instead of being able to spend time with my daughter on her seventh birthday, I had to deal with stuff for the city. So don't question how many hours we put in. By the way, we deferred our pay, let me finish. We deferred our pay until the beginning of next year, but Matt still gets paid. But we're here busting our ass for you people.
Yep.
Stop!
You didn't completely answer, picked up my question. I said, how many hours do you devote to get the best contract wins? That's all, I didn't say how many hours you're sitting in the yard.
Ernie, why don't you award a contract, you ain't going to see it for the two or three years, what the hell do you want us to do? Were you bidding every year?
Well, like six months before, start looking around.
You done. They have so many problems.
All right, you just have to, sit down.
Sit down.
Not wait, see.
You don't want me to go somewhere that my wife asked me not to go?
Everybody, I apologize for yelling, it's just been a rough week for me.
It's all rough weeks for you guys, and I sympathize with you.
It's rough days.
Well, 52 Ross River Street. I'm just kind of wanting to go over a couple of things you talked about today. But, like, he was talking about how much money is going for healthcare and this and that. This is under contracts, right?
Correct, yes.
So you have to renegotiate the contracts in order to change anything, right?
Right.
So really, you just can't do anything unless you just change the contract.
Yeah.
That's right.
We work on contracts now.
Just one.
Just one.
Because honestly, healthcare, I'm sorry, but in your health insurance through your job, the only people that I've heard around here, they get everything covered, don't pay copays, don't pay deductibles, don't pay anything out of pocket, are the city of Manessa employees. Sorry, but it isn't like that anymore, we can't.
You forgot one. Retirees.
And retirees.
For life.
For life.
For life.
For life.
For life.
You don't find that anywhere.
Again.
Like, you're not going to find that anywhere anymore. And the people that work for the city have to understand that some changes have to be made everywhere, not just for certain people. We have six people on the city crew, right?